So I have state.
We will call the regular meeting of Wednesday, March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five to order if we could stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Douglas.
Here.
Ms. Hayes. Mr. Warby. Mrs. Sensei.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Your motion to approve the agenda.
I'll call.
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
The Sensei.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes. All right, we have a number of minutes to approve tonight, so do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of February sixth, two thousand twenty-five?
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Sensei.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five?
I'm on. A second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Sensei.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll move.
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Sensei.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five?
I'll move.
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Sensei.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Sensei.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes. And the last one, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five?
I'll move.
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Sensei.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Doug- Mr. Douglas.
Yes. All right, before we begin board member reports this evening, we're going to have a moment of silence, so I'll read that now. It is always sad to learn of someone's passing, especially when it is a member of our Madison family. Recently, we learned of the passing of Dr. Louis Galant, a former superintendent of the Madison Local School District. Lou was born on May twenty-first, nineteen thirty-nine, and passed away on February twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. Lou grew up in Youngstown and graduated from Youngstown State University in nineteen sixty-four. He then served in the Air Force Reserves for seven years. Lou earned his master's degree from Westminster College of Pennsylvania and his PhD from Kent State University in nineteen seventy-five. Lou spent over thirty years as an educator in various administrative roles. He taught at Miami Dade Junior College, served as Dean of Instruction at Cuyahoga Community College Metro Campus. He was Assistant Superintendent of Mount Vernon City School District, and then went on to become Superintendent of Brooklyn City Schools and Madison's City Schools. Lou will be missed by his wife of sixty years, Maria Elena, children Danielle, Louis, Hillary, and Jeremy, as well as his grandchildren, nieces, nephews, and godchildren. All of us at Madison Schools extend our deepest and most sincere sympathy to Lou's family and friends. Thank you.
When was he the superintendent here and how long?
Um, he was here three years and it was the early eighties.
Early eighties.
And I just want to say that, you know, I've watched other board meetings and that every district does what we do to do these moments of silence, and I think it's, you know, a very special thing.
All right, is anyone wishing to give a board member report this evening? Attended the National Honor Society last night, where our superintendent began her, what did you call it, your?
My first of the last.
Lasts, yes, your, your final speech before National Honor Society with our district, and we inducted how many kids in?
Twenty-one.
Very nice ceremony, very well put together by the staff and the kids and who, who did all the speaking, so it was very nice. So, um, my compliments to the staff and Mr. Brady and everyone who worked hard to get that put together, it was very nice.
And I made my plea to those seniors, I had the, you know, best and the brightest there to do their scholarship applications because the awards banquet's coming up in two months.
Yeah, I don't think families always realize there are many, many scholarships that are available for graduating seniors, and we don't get nearly as many applications. I know I've attended those with my own children and otherwise, and sometimes you hear the same names a lot who are receiving these scholarships, and that's because some of those students took the time to complete so many of them, and so many of the particular scholarships didn't have any. So they, we have a page on our website under guidance, I think, for scholarships with a list of those, so you know a high school senior, please encourage them to visit that page so that they can apply for those scholarships because people in the community have donated that money and they want, they want to have some kids to give it to.
And I actually did put the link in the last community update, and I think I will do that as well in my Friday update, just in case seniors have nothing to do with respect for it, work on a few scholarship applications.
All right, we don't have anyone registered for public participation, so reports and recommendations of the treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item is, and I'm sure the board is aware, in January you passed the tax budget that is submitted to the county auditor. There was a budget hearing of all the school districts on February twenty-fourth, and this is a result of this information, so this is a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Just to recap, the millage for the general fund outside voted forty-nine point two-nine mills, inside mills four point eight-five, emergency levy of one point one-three mills, permanent proven levy of one mill, debt service two point one-four mills, and then the classroom facilities point five mills for a total millage of fifty-four point oh-six.
We have motions.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Sensei.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
The next item, the financial statements for the month of February and even though I wasn't here February to close the month, I just want to give it just a, an overview, cursory overview of basically the bank reconciliation. As of February twenty-eighth, that last day of the month this year of two thousand twenty-five, total amount in the bank accounts, which includes both our checking payroll and investment accounts, was twelve million, two hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars and eleven cents. We had outstanding accounts payable checks of a hundred eighty-seven thousand, two hundred one dollars and ninety-seven cents. Outstanding payroll checks, twenty-three thousand, eight hundred thirty-four dollars and ninety cents. So the net adjusted bank balance of twelve million, eighty thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-four cents, and that also was the book balance, so the, but the month of February reconciled book to bank. Questions or comments?
So we need a motion to approve the financial statements.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Sensei.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
The next item, there was one then and now certificate, basically then and now certificates are situations where a charge before a purchase order was issued, this was one, was a, the Bureau of Workers' Compensation has a true-up, an annual true-up payment that's online, so that hit the online before there was a purchase order issued for that, and the treasurer has authority to approve any of anything below three thousand dollars, this was four thousand, three hundred forty-three dollars. So what we're saying, we're asking, the money was appropriated, but there was no purchase order prior to the charge, and so the law states that the board approves of then and now certificate.
I'll move. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensei.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Next is donations, we have a number of them here. Generous donation from Five Rose Bears from North Ridge Sheets to South Elementary School to be used for PBIS prizes. Generation generous donation to, of snacks from Madison Wrestling Boosters to North Elementary School to be used as needed. A generous donation of Valentine's items from Sheets to South Elementary School to be used as needed. A generous donation of one thousand five hundred dollars from David and Leah Brizik.
Brizik.
Brizik, thank you, I'm going to mess up names here, I'm sorry, to Madison Middle School to be used to sponsor Washington DC trips. Generation generous donation of five hundred dollars from Kara and Joe.
Right down.
Right out, thank you, to Madison Middle School to be used to sponsor Washington DC trips. Generous donation of twenty-five dollars from Terry and George.
Ditch Creek.
To Madison Schools to be used for senior fees, generous donation of four hundred sixty-eight dollars from Mary Corilla in memory of John Corilla to Madison's Middle School to be used to sponsor Washington DC trip. Generous donation of six hundred dollars from Gary Scoach. Madison School Principals Fund to be used as needed. Generous donation of seven hundred dollars from Bugar.
The Burger.
Bugar Family to Madison School to be used for Washington DC trip. Generous donation of several items from Tiffany Robinson to Madison School to be used for sensory room and a generous donation of twenty-four, twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars from the American Legion Post six oh-one to be used as follow. All this five thousand for the Washington DC trip, five thousand for special education, two thousand for the twenty twenty-five Joseph Bancroft Scholarship, seven thousand to the twenty twenty-five scholarships, one thousand to Madison High School tennis, one thousand to Madison High School softball, one thousand to Madison School Girls Golf Program, one thousand to Madison High School Ecology Program, and one thousand five hundred dollars to Madison Middle School Principals Fund.
This blows me away. How generous people are. A lot of money just for this Washington trip, I mean, how many kids, do we know how many kids are going or?
They have four buses.
Four buses, when do they leave?
That I can.
Is that before Easter? Is it the?
I think it's before Easter.
We have a motion.
I'll move.
A second.
Additional discussion? Thank you to the people who donated, we appreciate it. Roll call please.
Mrs. Sensei.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
The next resolution is resolution to authorize the agreement with power schools electric supplier. This is through Ohio Association of School Business Officials, Ohio Schools Council, and Ohio School Boards Association, Buckeye Association of School Administrators, and it's their buying consortium for electricity.
I'll move.
A second.
And the last time we did this was three years ago, and it, it's important to do this to lock in the rate because it's going to go up significantly after Friday.
After Friday?
Yeah, after Friday.
But, but.
This is how good, you know, we had to lock in the agreement prior to Friday.
Wow.
Because they anticipate a huge increase. And as we all know, our electric bills will go up this way.
Oh, my, we're crazy.
Yeah.
I'm sick of them. Woo.
Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Sensei.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
The next item is authorizing the filing of a complaint against the valuation of real property for tax year twenty twenty-four against permit parcel number oh-one-B-one-twenty-two-zero-zero-zero-oh-one-two-zero. And just to give you a little bit of a history on this, received a call or email from David Rose, real estate tax attorney today, and this is a parcel that is, was a medical clinic, it is on McCacken Road. The auditor's value was five hundred and five thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, and in twenty twenty-three, it sold for one million, five hundred sixty-seven thousand, four hundred fifty dollars. So it's worth filing the claim, the complaint to increase the valuation. If, if it's approved, it could be revenue generation of about ten thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollars per year.
I move.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll just say, we don't do this very often where we make these complaints, and you can see in this, we're talking about a one million dollar difference between the last time it was valued and the sale price. So we only do that when there's that big of a discrepancy, maybe not quite that big, but when there's a significant discrepancy between those things, so we don't normally file complaints against tax, tax property or the, the tax value of a property. Roll call please.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensei.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
That concludes my reports.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have several items. First, I will, you know, I bring back Mrs. Gretchen Baffety, she hasn't been here for the last few members of the month, I think you've been. Oh, you were here for Britain. You were here.
It's March now.
I think it's March now. So, our member of the month this month is Matt Brooklyn, Matt is not able to be with us this evening, he is very active with his kids and their athletics and coaching, and they keep him very busy, but Matt was actually nominated by two members and selected as our member of the month. He's a fourth grade teacher over at North Elementary School, and a couple of the things that were included in the nominations were that he is just a team player and he goes above and beyond for the kids and really makes those connections and supports the kids in any way possible, so Matt got his certificate and his gift certificate, and we want to congratulate him. And then the other piece that I have this evening is speaking of scholarships, Madison Education Association provides two thousand dollar scholarships annually to students in the community who are continuing their education in an education field, they're looking to go into teaching of some sort, could be at any level, could be general education, music education, special education, and we provide two one thousand dollar scholarships annually, and we are hosting our second annual bunny breakfast on Saturday, April fifth, to fundraise for those scholarships, it was an. It was an absolutely wonderful event last year. The Easter Bunny is there. We have pancakes and sausage and fruit, there are games, there are crafts. It's just a really nice morning to bring your kids. The line for the Easter Bunny is not real long. It's sort of a quieter setting. We MEA invested, we purchased our own bunny suit, so we 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 will, we will continue to do this, but I just want to welcome everybody to come and join us. It's for a great cause to really support some of our local seniors with the scholarships. You know, and I agree that the senior awards night, that I think is my favorite part of my position is to be able to go every year and and see the kids and to be able to share that. When I see them, they're significantly smaller and it's fun to see them, you know, as they grow and the amazing things that they're going to continue on with. And there's so much generosity with scholarships in our community, so we love to participate in that. So there's information going on the school Facebook page. I have information about purchasing tickets for the event. But we would love to invite everybody to join us for a fun morning.
And I'm going to make another plug in this week's update with the actual link that they can click into. Last week we did the flyer.
Perfect.
This time we're going to put the link out.
And if anyone has questions, they're welcome to reach out to me as well. I can guide them in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to say a few words about Matt Brooklyn too, because Matt, the last couple of years stepped out of his classroom on numerous occasions to help Teresa while Mr. Baker was undergoing his cancer treatment. So it was, you know, he just did whatever was needed and it's we're very thankful and you know, and he did it with a smile on his face every day.
We were going to nominate him as Administrator of the Month, but you.
Yeah. So I have a couple of things, just to update the board. I have had a couple of different conversations with our soon-to-be-new superintendent in the last week. I will be meeting with him next Friday to start going over so many things. You know, he said today he had a document and I'm anticipating the document. We're not going to eat the whole elephant in a in a Friday morning breakfast, but we are going to start going through all the things he has to know about Madison. And, you know, I I'm looking forward to it. I told him it's my opportunity to teach again, right? And along those lines, you know, you're you're going to be approving the hire of Andrea Kirby this evening. She will be the new superintendent secretary and she's a Madison graduate. She has students, children across the street at North Elementary School. Her mother was a teacher in the district. You know, I had, I worked with her when I was at the high school. We were just very excited to have her on board and she's going to get the crash course and everything she needs to know that Susan has done starting April first or March thirty-first. Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Welcome. And then you know, I have talked with Daniel about, you know, my two right hands, right and left, actually, you know, the one I and their contracts, so their contracts are on the agenda this evening. I can't say enough about these two people that have, you know, supported me over the last so many years, Jen. You know, got hired, what was the year we hired you at the high school?
Two thousand seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen and right during COVID, you came up here.
Best time.
Yeah. I don't want to try and interview people. I think you've got what it takes to do this job and and she has run with it and, you know, it's a thankless job. What she does is Director of People's Services and working in special education. But she has a niche for the detail and all those important things. And then Dave, you know, he's just in my right hand for the whole ten years I've been superintendent. And I couldn't be blessed with a better team, you know. He deals with all things transportation, does a great job, you know, maneuvering those areas, federal programs, literacy, you know, we're a very small group here, but we get it done. So I am appreciative of my team.
As are we.
So I think that, other than that, I had a great time at National Honor Society last evening and was surprised when Sean showed up. He was taking pictures, so. But it was, it was a very nice night. I look forward to more of those moments in the next, in the coming weeks. It will be hard. I'm not, I'm not going to lie. You know, it's twenty-three years I've been.
You were.
All right. Dave, you have anything to say?
No, I don't have anything tonight. I've been working with a couple of our one-off grants, our Stronger Connection Grant at the middle school and our each child on track grant I was working on today in Columbus, so I'll have more information to report on both of those at the next point.
I wanted to add a little bit about the donation from Mrs. Robison for Madison High School, the sensory room. So we have an increasing population of students with significant needs. And we have sensory rooms in each of our elementary buildings and also our middle school. We haven't had one officially up and running for many years. And Mrs. Robison approached me and said, you know, that she had a strong interest in helping to get that going. And I met with our occupational therapist and Mr. Brady and a couple of the teachers. And we are going to, Mr. Brady graciously gave us a spot in the refurbished cyber cafe. And so working with Pat Smith and developing a room. So we're trying to come up, we'll get the kids involved, they're probably zen'd. So it's very different from elementary versus high school, but softer lighting. I have fantastic occupational therapists and and they're really running with, you know, softer lighting at a place where students can work in a little quieter area. And then one, another room like off of it that will be more sensory based that has those, some of the weighted, you know, blankets and just, you know, fidgets and that. And so I met Mrs. Robison today, in fact, and she had quite a bit of more than I anticipated. So I'm very appreciative of that, especially moving forward to meet the increasing needs of our students, especially those with significant disabilities. And then I'm very thankful, 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 thankful to our American Legion for actually setting aside money for special education. That was very nice and so I've already had a few ideas about, but that probably some of that money will be going towards, you know, this new room and then some needed testing materials for our psychologists. So I'm thankful very much and thankful very much to you for believing in me and for another three years, so I'm very thankful, looking forward to it.
Ready for recommendations?
Yes.
Under the employment motion this morning, this evening, this morning, we're asking you to accept the fine resignation slash suspension, to accept with regret the retirement resignation of Norma Ray, South Elementary First Grade Teacher effective the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year after twenty-three years of service to the district. Accept the resignation of Paul Fierino, Madison Middle School Educational Assistant Cafeteria effective February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. To suspend the contract of Shane Hamilton, Madison High School Assistant Baseball Coach effective March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. We're asking you to enter into the following employment contracts of substitute teachers as approved by the Educational Service Center of the Western Reserve or Madison Local School District's Assistant Superintendent under a one-year limited substitute teacher contract, beginning with Taylor Cahill and ending with Brian Verdy. We're asking you to approve the following casual day-to-day substitute for this school year, Samantha Perkins, to employ Tiffany Green as a building substitute at South Elementary School effective January sixth, twenty twenty-five. To employ David Bull under a three-year administrator's contract as assistant superintendent effective August first, twenty twenty-five through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. To employ Jen Grimes under a three-year administrator's contract as Director of People's Services effective August first, twenty twenty-five through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. Employ Andrea Kirby under a limited contract as a superintendent secretary for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five contract year effective March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Rescind the personal service contract of Jim Jeremy Neuer, Neuer, softball coach. That was a tough one, effective March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. To employ the following certificated personnel under a one-year limited supplemental contract for the twenty-four, twenty-five contract year, Pat Moran, Madison High School Assistant Baseball Coach. The following non-certificated under a one-year limited personal, personal service contract for the twenty twenty-four school year, Haley Juice, Madison Middle School Cheer Advisor, Jeremy Neuer, JV softball coach, Bob Alderman, co-JV softball coach. And then we're asking you to approve the following transfer, Darlene Mahelli from a three and a half hour position as a pre-K non-union classroom assistant to a five-day-per-week, three-hour-per-day, four, four days-per-week pre-K special education assistant effective February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. I'll move.
One question?
Yes.
We're rescinding the, this Jeremy as the softball coach, okay? But then we're adding him over here as the softball coach. I'm confused.
Because we were splitting the position. So he had the full contract, we had to rescind the contract to make him the co and split.
Okay, that's understandable enough.
Yep. You got to have the paper trail for the auditor.
Yes, that's fine.
Because auditors like those things neat, right, Greg?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm just, just confused.
I get it.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
This is Sensei?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
All right, the next is a resolution to purchase from school bus bids received by Ohio Schools Council. So this is giving us the authority to go out to bid through Ohio Schools Council for the bids. It doesn't commit us to buying buses, but we have said that we would like to, if possible, purchase two bids in the fall in their bus bid or spring to October, I think is the bids are good from.
I'll move. A second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
This is Sensei?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, the next item is a resolution recognizing and honoring students selected for the Madison chapter of the National Honor Society. It's a standard resolution and we will make sure that each student gets it. You know, once it's been approved. I'll move.
A second.
Any discussion? Congratulations to all of the students. Roll call, please.
This is Sensei?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
All right, there is no action to be taken on this tonight. This is just the first readings. I gave you all the hard copies, so there's your spring break reading for you. So it's a first reading. This is going to become Andrea's favorite job, policy and policy update. It's a lot of fun. But we begin with policy zero, one, three, one point one, technical corrections and go through eighty-five hundred food service. Just a couple of things, there's a lot that was put in the legislature, this lame duck legislature, and it's got a lot of these things in there. So the Parents' Bill of Rights are in there. There are things. Expanding.
Requirements.
Yeah, that was just an update, yeah. That one's an update, but removal, suspension, expulsion and permanent exclusion of students. The students' rights have been expanded in that to give a little more leeway and length of those things. There are, there is the bathroom bill policy that's in there, restrooms locker and the release time for religious education. So, you know, if you have questions as you were reading through these, please do not hesitate to reach out. And if I can't answer it, I will get Neola on the line to answer it for you. But a lot of these things are mandated. All right.
So they need no vote or anything, right?
No, okay. Yeah, I mean, so the consent calendar. There's just a few items on the consent calendar this evening. The first is to enter into an agreement with, between JAMPRO and Madison Local Schools to provide cleaning services for Madison Middle School effective April first, twenty twenty-five pursuant to the contract found on file with the Board Office. To enter into an agreement between the Impact Group and Madison Local Schools to provide strategic plans, implementation support as found on file at the Board Office. To approve the programs listed as found on file, the Board Office is an educational option. And that would be advanced manu, advanced manufacturing cooperating teacher Dean Watt for Michael Hankersley to enter into an agreement between Western Governors University and Madison Local Schools to provide clinical experience pursuant to the agreement found on file at the Board Office. To approve an addendum with plan to provide access to one additional pixel lot system for a five-year period at a cost of five hundred dollars pursuant to the agreement on filed at the Board Office and to approve Sarah Welch as a volunteer softball coach for the twenty-four, twenty-five season. I'll move.
A second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
This is Sensei?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes. Before we entertain a motion for executive session, I just wanted to say that, you know, we have a few items that were completed tonight with Mr. Bull and Miss Cantonese Grimes and then also Miss Kirby. These folks are going to be essential to the success of our next superintendent. This is our central office staff and the administrative assistant to the superintendent. So, you know, when Mr. Ramblor gets started, he'll have a solid team here in the office to rely on. And that's part of the timing of this is so that he knows that he has these folks who have have a proven track record of success and someone who will be soon to to provide that. And that'll just set him up so that he has a nice team built around him, as Angela has enjoyed, so he will continue to do that.
And like I said, I had conversations with Daniel about all of these things. So, you know, I am looking forward to instead of very soon transition.
Good. All right, so do we have a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of public employees?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
This is Sensei?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Six thirty-six.
We stand in recess.